Wednesday, February 10th, 2021. Afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Bertistin?
Here.
Maps?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. Under Portland city code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference. And the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, E-Gov-PDX, wwwportlandoregon.gov/video and Channel 30. The public can provide written testimony at, by emailing the council clerk at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and to promote physical distancing. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you all for your continued patience, flexibility, and understanding as we manage this challenging situation to conduct the city's business. And now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order in the court.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at portlandoregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony when the council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded. Thank you.
Mayor, I think you were muted. Did you ask me to read?
Sorry, that makes your job a lot harder, doesn't it? We only have one item this afternoon, item 93, a land use hearing. Could you please call the item?
Appeal by Walter Wyler, representing the Downtown Neighborhood Association against the Design Commission's decision to approve a ground-level remodel of a 23-story mixed-use building at 1,000 Southwest Broadway, which is in the downtown sub-district of the Central City Plan District,
Thanks, Kealan. And now we'll have the city attorney start with a couple of announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an evidentiary hearing. This means you may submit new evidence to the council in support of your arguments. The order of testimony is as follows. We'll begin with a staff report by the Bureau of Development Services staff for approximately 10 minutes. Following the staff report, council will hear from interested persons in the following order. The appellant will go first, will have 10 minutes to present their case. Following the appellant, persons who support the appeal will go next. Each person will have three minutes to speak.
I think you may have just muted yourself.
Ah, I apologize. When did I, when did I cut out?
Right after the supporters of the appeal.
All right, thank you. The principal opponent, who is, in this case, the applicant, will then have 15 minutes to address city council and rebut the appellant's presentation. If there is no principal opponent, council will move directly to testimony for persons who oppose the appeal. After the principal opponent, council will hear from persons who oppose the appeal. That is, people who support the application. Each of these people will have three minutes. Finally, the appellant will have five minutes to rebut the presentation of the opponent's, the applicant, in this case, of the appeal. Council may then close the hearing, deliberate, and take a vote on the appeal. If the vote is a tentative vote, the council will set a future date for the adoption of findings and a final vote on the appeal. If council takes a final vote today, that will conclude the matter before council. There are several guidelines I need to announce for those who will address council today. First, submitting evidence into the record. Any letters or documents you wish to become part of the record should be given to the council clerk after you testify. The original or a copy of any slides, photographs, drawings, maps, videos, or other items you showed to council during your testimony, including PowerPoint presentations, should be given to the council clerk to make sure they become part of the record. Second, testimony must be directed to approval criteria. Any testimony, arguments, and evidence you present must be directed toward the applicable approval criteria for this land use review or other criteria in the city's comprehensive plan or zoning code that you believe apply to the decision. BDS staff will identify the applicable approval criteria as part of their staff report to council. Third, issues must be raised with specificity. You must raise an issue clearly enough to give council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue. If you don't, you will be precluded from appealing to the Land Use Board of Appeals or LUBA based on that issue. And finally, the applicant must identify constitutional challenges to conditions of approval. If the applicant fails to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough specificity to allow the council to respond, the applicant will be precluded from bringing in action for damages in Circuit Court. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Do any members of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest?
Mayor, I have no perceived direct conflicts with this matter.
Thank you. Does anybody have any conflicts they'd like to declare? Seeing none. Do any members of the council have any ex parte contacts to declare or information gathered outside of this hearing to disclose? Not seeing any. Have any members of the council made visits to the site involved in this matter?
Made no visits for this purpose, but of course I know exactly where it's located.
Excellent, thank you. No member, sorry, go ahead.
Ditto, same thing.
No member of the council has visited this site for the purpose of this hearing. Do any members of the council have any other matters that needs, need to be discussed before we begin the hearing? I'm not seeing that, so we'll begin with the testimony. We'll start with the staff report. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I am Hannah Bryant. I am going to...
Hannah, could you speak up a little bit? It's a little hard to hear you. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better, thank you.
Okay, great. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Hannah Bryant. I'm a city planner with the Design and Historic Resource Review Team at the Land Use Services Division at BDS. I'm here today to present the Type III land use appeal for 1,000 Southwest Broadway. The site is located in the Central City Plan District, in the downtown sub-district. It has a full block of frontage on Southwest Broadway Street, directly across the street from the Arlene Schnitzer Concert Hall, and a half-block frontage on both Southwest Main and Southwest Salmon Street. The site is owned CXD, Central Commercial Zone, with a design overlay. The approval criteria at this site are the Central City Fundamental Design Guidelines. The applicant seeks approval to enclose an existing ground-level arcade, shown in the top-right image. The arcade was developed originally to provide shelter for movie theater guests as they queued to buy tickets and enter the basement-level theater. The former movie theater has been closed now for over a decade. Building ownership is pursuing a large building remodel to remove the former theaters, create new ground-level commercial tenant spaces, and a large new building lobby. The project has gone through a Type III design review. Consistent with all reviews of this type, feedback was solicited from other inter-agency partner bureaus, as well as the public. The site was posted with images and a description of the proposal, the contact information for staff and the applicant, and a mailed notice was sent out to all the nearby registered organizations, as well as neighboring residents. Only one comment was received, a letter from the Downtown Neighborhood Association. No other written or oral testimony was received from the public related to this proposal.
Hi Hannah, so sorry to interrupt. Were you hoping to show a presentation right now because we're not seeing anything?
You're not, interesting. Yes. It shows as showing. I'm gonna stop sharing then.
A member of my team can also help bring it up if that would be useful.
Good catch, I didn't even notice there was a missing presentation.
Oh. You're missing all of my beautiful pictures.
Hey, this is Stacy. I'm, I'm happy to do it as well.
Okay.
That would be good. Would you mind going back then and starting with your first?
Sure, no, I'm happy to...
...any of it.
Stacy, if you want to pull it up and share your screen, I will just do the talking.
Yes, let me do that now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you see a screen?
Yeah, looks good.
All right.
All right. I'll start over. I'm gonna skip my introduction, though, I think you guys got that. So we'll start with the next slide, Stacy. All right. So this is the site map, showing that it has a full-block frontage on Southwest Broadway and a half-block frontage on Southwest Salmon and Southwest Main. Next slide. The approval criteria here are the Central City Fundamental Design Guidelines. Next slide. The applicant seeks approval to enclose an existing ground-level arcade, shown in the top-right image that hopefully you can see now. The arcade was developed to provide shelter for movie theater guests as they queued to buy tickets and enter the basement-level theaters. The former movie theater has been closed now for over a decade. Building ownership is pursuing a large building remodel to remove the former theaters and create new ground-level commercial tenant spaces and a large new building lobby. The image at the bottom right shows that enclosed arcade now included within those new ground-level commercial tenant spaces with the storefront blazing right at the back of the sidewalk. Next slide. The project has gone through a Type III design review. Consistent with all Type III reviews, feedback was solicited from other inter-agency partner bureaus, as well as the public. The site was posted with images and a description of the proposal, contact information for the staff planner and applicant, and a mailed notice was sent out to all nearby registered organizations, as well as neighboring residents. Only one comment was received, a letter from the Downtown Neighborhood Association. No other written or oral testimony was received from the public related to this proposal. A public design commission hearing was held on November 19th. At that hearing, the design commission voted to approve the project. No additional conditions of approval or revisions were requested. Next slide. At the November 19th Design Commission hearing, the commission's deliberations focused on the ways the proposal would enhance the pedestrian environment, including adding large windows into active ground-level uses, increased weather protection in the form of glass and steel canopies on all three street frontages, multiple new pedestrian entrances, and the thoughtful detailing designed to protect the existing stone cladding on the building from damage during construction. Next slide. The Downtown Neighborhood Association is the appellant in this appeal. In its appeal statement, the Downtown Neighborhood Association listed two issues. The first issue is related to the street tree palette. This issue has now been resolved. The applicant worked with Urban Forestry and the appellant to revise the street tree plan. Urban Forestry has approved the revised plan, and the Downtown Neighborhood Association has withdrawn this issue from the appeal. The second appeal item is the retention of the existing movie theater sign. The removal of this existing sign was approved as part of the overall design review approval for the project. The Downtown Neighborhood Association objects to that portion of the approval, and that is the basis for today's appeal. Before I jump into the nuance of this, I'll begin with some background information. First, a review of the design review process, followed but with some background on this particular sign. Simply put, design review staff and our volunteer design commission weigh the proposals that are put forward by applicants against the relevant design guidelines for that site. If a proposal meets the design guidelines as it is presented by the applicant, it is approved. If the proposal does not meet the guidelines, then we work with the applicants to refine the design to ensure it does meet guidelines, or we can deny the proposal. During the design review process, we study the historic reviews for the site and the previous decisions to inform our current review. Next slide. This sign, from the horizontal marquee at the bottom to the detailing at the top, not including the base, is almost 40 feet tall. The sign is exclusively supported by its large base, which comes down to the ground in front of the Chamford Building corner, beside the sidewalk right of way. There is currently only a single lateral tie to the building and no other attachments. This building was approved through a 1989 review. That review found that the building, without the sign, met the approval criteria. The sign was approved later, in 1991, through an adjustment review. The adjustment review approved a sign size larger than that which is allowed through Portland Sign Code Title 32. This increased size was justified based on the history of large illuminated signs along Southwest Broadway. This context-specific allowance is reflected in the current Central City Fundamental Design Guideline, D3, Broadway Unique Sign District. Next slide. This design guideline, which I can bring up again if you'd like to review it further, recognizes that Portland has a very restrictive sign code, and it says that in this area, based on its historic context, we do allow people to do something special beyond that which is outright allowed by sign code. It is a permissive guideline, but is not previously constituted a requirement in that we have not required every new development on Broadway to include a large illuminated sign, but we have allowed them when they are proposed and desired by the applicants. Next slide. When considering this item, the Design Commission determined that as a product of the 1990s, the sign does not have historic significance and that its retention creates an awkward pedestrian condition with a pinch point between the base and what would be a new storefront. The Design Commission determined that removing the sign and its base, and its base to allow unobstructed views into a new active commercial space, plus the additional canopy coverage of this busy corner, better meets the approval criteria than retaining the sign. It saw this proposal as a repair to the urban fabric and celebrated the revitalization of this building, particularly during such a challenging time in our downtown. While staff and the Design Commission indicated appreciation for the existing sign, it was determined that the proposal, as presented by the applicant, which included the removal of the sign, met the design guidelines and was approvable. Next slide. As the deciding body, you have three options before you today. For the sake of clarity, I've attempted to illustrate each of these options. Option, option one, to deny the appeal and uphold the previous design commission approval would result in this outcome. This outcome, or this option, would remove the sign and its base and uphold the approval that includes new storefront between the columns and new canopies at this corner. Next slide. Option two, to deny the appeal and instruct the applicant to revise the sign and return to council at a future date, could result in numerous design outcomes. This image is just one possible outcome of this option. Council may direct the applicant to explore options for retaining the sign, with or without its base. Removing the sign base will require the applicant to remove existing stone cladding on the building and attach the sign to existing building structure. If canopy coverage is to be retained, the sign would need to be reduced in size to remove the horizontal marquee element or mounted at a different height. Next slide, please. An option three, to grant the appeal and overturn the Design Commission's decision of approval, will deny the project in its entirety. The outcome would be a continuation of the conditions that exist in the building today, including the below-grade arcade element and the retention of the sign. So here are those three options again. Next slide. I'll leave them up for now. I welcome questions, and I will note that the staff from Urban Forestry are also present on this call in case you have questions related to the street tree item. And with that, do you have any questions for me?
Colleagues, any questions? I'm not seeing any at this particular moment, so thank you. That was a good presentation. With that, we'll move on to the appellant then. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I am Walter Wyler, board chair of and representing the Downtown Neighborhood Association, the DNA. Thank you for your service and your time today. The owners of 1,000 Southwest Broadway propose to remodel its ground floor level. The DNA expresses its gratitude to the owners to invest in this important downtown building, especially at a time as Portland recovers. This is a great project, and there are great people involved with it. The DNA reviewed the project and approves of everything except the removal of the Broadway sign. The DNA appeals the project approval, requesting that the Broadway sign be retained at its current location, while its marquee and supporting pedestal may be removed. The DNA's reasons supporting the appeal will be presented by Mr. Paul Weir, a member of the DNA's Land Use Transportation Committee. Mr. Weir's education includes degrees in engineering, science, structural engineering, and architecture. His 50-year career included design, building technology, and historic preservation, with periods of teaching at the University of Oregon, University of South Florida, California College of Art. Mr. Weir's projects include, projects of note include Beacon Block Tower in San Francisco, US Federal Reserve Bank in San Francisco, Bright Angel Lodge in the Grand Canyon, Coit Tower in San Francisco, and Candlestick Park. Paul? The mic is yours.
Thank you, Walt. Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council. We are here today to consider the architectural history and significance of the Broadway sign, the historic memory of Portland's theater district, and the significance of the design review and approval process. Our review of the proposed project, the design review process, and the history of the design and approval of the existing sign in 1991 indicate that the Design Commission's review of this project was flawed. It simply did not include consideration of the importance of the sign and its prior approval by the design review process. In fact, the only mention of the sign in the Design Commission's decision to allow removal of the sign was the BDS planning staff report to the Design Commission that stated, sadly, the iconic Broadway sign is not, is not proposed to be retained as a reminder of the Broadway Theater District. The Design Commission further failed to acknowledge and consider the prior design review findings and approval of the sign. Design of the existing sign was previously reviewed by the 1991 Design Commission and found to be supportive of and in compliance with the intent, requirements, and criteria of Portland's zoning code, the Central City Design Guidelines, the urban downtown policy, and all applicable design guidelines, and was thus approved. The Design Commission declared at that time, both the sign and building architecture were designed together. The sign is one of the bonuses associated with the project, which led the council to approve the building project in 1985. As a bonus for approval of the building, the sign should be considered an integral architectural element of the building and should not be subject to removal. The sign represents an updating of the 1920s dynamism of Broadway. The sign is thus considered as public art and should be maintained. The Commission further declared that the sign reinforces the dynamic performing arts center Broadway node. The sign is exceptional in extending the architectural vocabulary of the main street gates. This compatibility will help bridge Broadway and add excitement to three of the four corners at the intersection. And finally, the sign will be large and bright. It complements the bright light effect reinforced by the Portland sign across the street, and its architecture reflects the traffic gates at Broadway and Main. This is also consistent with today's urban downtown policy. All the conditions, requirements, design guidelines, and qualities that justified approval and installation of the sign in 1991 still stand and are even more historically important today, 30 years later. The sign remains in support of and in compliance with today's criteria and Central City Design Guidelines, including the Central City 2035 Plan, the urban downtown policy. Both encourage projects that reinforce Broadway as a Portland theater and bright lights district. Today's applicable design guidelines include: A2, emphasize Portland themes. A4, use unifying elements to help connect individual buildings in different areas. A5, enhance, embellish, and identify areas by integrating elements that reflect on build and area's character and qualities. A6, reuse, rehabilitate, and restore buildings and building elements. C3, respect the architectural integrity of buildings and building elements. C4, complement the context of existing buildings. And C7, design corners that build active intersections, including the use of signs, which is much like the Broadway sign. We can see that the Broadway sign clearly supports the intent and is in compliance with today's Central City Fundamental Design Guidelines and should be retained. It is apparent that the current design process for relocation of the storefront windows has ignored the findings of the prior design review and approval for the sign. The current design review process has not considered the importance of the existing sign and its compliance with today's guidelines. The current design review process is limited and has only considered the merits of relocation of the recessed storefront windows of the recessed storefront windows and installation of the overhead canopy at the face of the building along Southwest Broadway, Southwest Main, and Southwest Sandman Streets. Although the Downtown Neighborhood Association is in support of these project improvements, we do not support removal of the Broadway sign. Removal was not considered in the design review process and should not be included in the removal in their approval for remodel of the storefront and installation of the overhead canopies. We believe the pedestal and marquee can be removed and the Broadway sign kept and structurally supported in its present location as illustrated in the in the photograph. This solution would allow active pedestrian interaction with the interior corner retail space as required by the project. In addition, this option would satisfy both the project commercial needs and comply with required design guidelines and prior conditions of approval. It is understood that buildings have two main responsibilities. First, they must provide for and support the interior function and program of the building. And second, they define and develop the public spaces formed between buildings. It is the quality and character of this public space that we are concerned with today. It is the building's exterior face and edge along the street that develop the character and cultural qualities of public spaces and the identity of the city. They define the quality of the pedestrian experience and they maintain the memory of earlier city history. It is the property owner's responsibility to safeguard the quality and character of Portland's downtown public space. The proposal to remove the Broadway sign ignores this responsibility and compromises the contribution of the sign to this area. In conclusion, we recommend that removal of the Broadway sign not be included in approval of this project. Projects are required to enhance the quality and character of the urban environment. This project needless needlessly removes an important architectural icon and compromises the existing quality and character of the urban environment and heritage of the city. The sign is an integral architectural element of the building and public art and should not be removed. Removal is blind to the intent of today's Central City Design Guidelines, the urban downtown policy, and is out of compliance with the relevant approval criteria and applicable design guidelines. Retention of the sign in place accompanied by removal of the pedestal and marquee satisfies both the project commercial needs and the applicable design guidelines. If removed from this location, the Broadway sign's historic significance, its contribution to the pedestrian experience, and the character of the street, intersection, neighborhood, and the city of Portland will be lost. We respectfully request that the City Council rescind the removal of the Broadway sign included in the project approval by the design commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Are there any questions for Mr. Weir while he's front and center? I just have one, and it's it's kind of an oddball question. What happened to the original sign? We saw in your first slide that you presented for the record, the what I presume to be the historic original sign over there on the right-hand side, and now the argument is about retaining one that was apparently approved in the 1990s. Is that correct?
It's 1991.
What what happened to the original sign?
I would have to look to the owner of the property to to respond to that. Perhaps perhaps Jason can respond during his presentation.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions before we move on? Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. So the theater is going away. What's going to be placed a theater?
I believe it will be two retail spaces, but again, Jason, the the design architect for the owner can can address that more specifically.
Thank you. So my understanding is the sign is there because it actually reflected a theater, and it won't be a theater on that corner. So I'm not understanding why the sign is of such significance if there's no theater that the sign is supporting people too.
The sign is a historical reference to the Theater District as shown in the in the current slide. It maintains the heritage of the Theater District, the bright lights of that area. It provides it provides continuity and connection to the Portland sign across the street. It forms a gate, a gateway along along Southwest Broadway to the Theater District. It also provides continuity and connection with the with the two signs and lights that are located at the corners of the intersection across the street and integrates the architectural integrity of that intersection and provides a strong identity to the Performing Arts Center at that intersection of the city.
Commissioner Hardesty, you're muted.
I'm on mute. Ah, I'm acting like Mayor Weiler.
No. Sound a bit true.
Thank you for that. You know, as I look at the buildings that are in this art district, many of them are U R Ms, and a decision will be made in the near future about whether those buildings, what happens with those buildings. And I'm actually thinking about what downtown looks like coming out of the pandemic. And honestly, the downtown today does not reflect the cultural and racial history of Oregon or Portland. And so while I appreciate iconic remembrances from the good old days back in 1940s, I'm actually really much more interested in who we are coming out of this pandemic. And some of the things that may have been, let me just say, glorified by folks who have been in positions of power forever in this city will look different. And so I so I'm just trying to, and I haven't made a decision about how I'm going to vote on this, but, you know, if there's not a theater in the building, I'm just not sure why I would actually try to convince people that the sign needs to be there. I suspect 10 years from now, this street's going to look a lot different than it looks today. And so, again, I mean, you know, we do development, and some days we call it progress, and then some days we say, wait, we're just destroying what we had, right? So that's where I am at the moment, just trying to weigh the historic nature of preserving things because we've always had them, and then thinking about the feature and how inclusive our future should be, because we're a much more racially and ethnically diverse community than we were back in the 1940s. So I don't guess that was a question, but I just want you to know where my mind is going as I listen to this presentation.
Well, I thank you. I think those are all really important points. The idea that that the theater no longer exists inside the building, I think, is a programmatic commercial concern for the building. But the building also has a responsibility to contribute to and develop the character of the urban space. And and the sign is performing that function on behalf of the building. We can see across the street, the Portland sign, the Portland Theater no longer exists either. And it's these two signs together that maintain the heritage of the city and and identify the current Portland Theater District. I think these these functions of this particular part of the city are going to remain, and I think will continue to contribute to the culture and quality of the city, including all all people of the city participate in in the richness of the cultural environment that is maintained at this important location in the in the city.
I would say we don't have it there yet, but what we're trying to do is build it.
I believe so, and I and I think maintaining the Broadway sign will contribute to that to that effort and goal.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardesty, did that conclude your question? Yeah, good, okay. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Weir. Could you go to the next slide, please? Slide three. Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. Weir, I'm really happy to see this. When I contemplated this over the weekend, if you will, I was looking for this picture perhaps in my brain. And my question to you is, what what did you find out in terms of engineering and architecturally or engineering-wise? Does this work? Since we took down the pedestal part of this, if you will, and got rid of the marquee sign and the and the base, what kind of feedback did you get? What kind of specs did you get? What kind of expenses connected to such an endeavor?
Well, we are the appellant, and as such, I haven't taken on responsibility for the for the design and done the kinds of studies that you're inquiring about. But I'm also a structural engineer, and it appears to me that the Camford corner of the building and the fact that the building steps back and forms that the shallow roof platform right at the top of the sign provides a very convenient opportunity to extend the frame horizontally and provide support for the for the sign at that diagonal corner, which is right at the top of the sign. I think this would avoid the cost and expense and difficulty of hanging the sign at the face of the building. It would eliminate the need to penetrate the stone cladding, which I think would be a difficult process. And I think it almost looks like the that this corner, this intersection, and the fact that the roof steps back is really intended to accommodate that kind of support system. And I think it would be quite attractive and and would not impact the architectural features of the of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Weir.
Very good. Any further questions at this juncture? Thank you. Good discussion. Next up, we'll hear from supporters of the appeal. So people who like what they just heard. Your next three minutes each, and Kealan, you should have the list, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's correct. First up, we have Wendy Rom.
Welcome, Wendy.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
I'm sorry, Wendy, to interrupt. Could we take the presentation down just so that the council, we can all see each other, even though we're on Zoom? It's she's on the phone. At least we can see your name. Welcome. Thank you, Wendy.
No, I'm not on the phone.
Oh, I don't, we don't see you. Do you have your video on? You don't have to have it on. It's we can hear you.
Yeah, it's on. What?
All right.
What do you want me to do?
Nothing, you're good. Go ahead and talk. We can hear you just fine.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, speaking on behalf of the D N A, I'm Wendy Rom, and I live in the West End. I echo the D N A's appreciation of this company's reinvestment in downtown. I also emphasize that we support all aspects of the project, with the exception of the Broadway sign's removal. That support included an expansion of interior floor space at the expense of the public realm sidewalk. That expansion gives the owner the prospect of more future income, and we're happy about that. We also heard that the owner wants to rebrand the building, hence the sign's removal. Losing public art signage is a loss to the public realm. This loss might be read as a loss to downtown Broadway's brand. It seems sad to pit a building's brand against a key downtown neighborhood brand. The pairing of the Broadway sign with the Portland sign just across the street on the Schnitzer creates a gateway to this important district. Known for its bright theater lights, it still carries that brand thanks to the two signs. Worthy of mention is that the C C 2035 Plan recommends more lights for Broadway, not less. The specific location matters because being across the street from each other, the two announce the entrance to the now cultural district. This kind of public art is critical to keep as our downtown begins its long recovery. Of note is that the Portland Five recently spent a lot of money to refurbish their Portland sign and marquee, clearly understanding the importance of these remarkable works, both for the neighborhood and the city's image. Why do such markers echoing the past matter? All our stories matter. Their physical presence prompts us to tell the next generation of the story of the Bright Lights District. Who talks today about the southwest Jewish Italian residential district, lost to history after being demolished? Who is remembering the once-thriving African-American jazz bar on Jefferson that birthed major, nationally-recognized African-American jazz artists? Once the mural room street mosaic disappeared without fanfare, people stopped asking about it. How about the once-thriving Albina District? Once gone, all that was left was resentment and today regret and shame. Vestiges matter. They give us the opportunity to remind ourselves and tell our children our stories. Without reminders, we forget. These stories enrich us all. Thank you for listening and letting me speak.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next individual, please, Kealan.
Next up, we have Robert Gelbke.
Robert, are you on board?
How's that? Is that better?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Start over. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Robert Gelbke. I live at American Plaza in downtown. I am here representing the Downtown Neighborhood Association and its Land Use Committee. I support retention of the Broadway Theater sign that is in the southwest corner of 1000 Broadway. Commands a classic corner of the historic Theater District that thousands of Portlanders and visitors alike have held dear for many generations. In addition to be a sign of announcement and location, this piece of public art is more a symbol of family, joy, discovery, enlightenment, and community, where new memories were made or old memories refreshed. Today's downtown is facing tremendous challenges of recovery, with block after block of plywood boarded-up buildings, graffiti seemingly everywhere, homeless struggling to survive and hold on until better days arrive, and piles of trash. We need reminders of nice things to keep our sense of self and community alive so that we can recapture our dreams with energized commitments. To lose this integral piece of our historical core is to totally disregard its importance to the context of our community, our downtown, and our comfort zone. As a city, we are now at a critical juncture in our fight to remain to maintain our long-term relevance. To use, to lose unique and defining characteristics such as this sign is demoralizing and disheartening. On behalf of the 15,000 residents, the D N A felt compelled to object to the removal of this key piece of our cultural heritage. What message is City Council sending if they don't object? Erasing cultural stories is okay. What are often ignored are the emotional and psychological impacts on the community. These factors get lost in code compliance and financial planning processes. These historical touchpoints are important to all of us for a wide variety of reasons. The Broadway sign is a striking concept that's an integral part of this place we call Portland. We need all these places. Save them, guard them, and nourish them. We cannot afford to lose sight of their importance. I urge you to vote to keep the sign where it is. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Thomas Ray.
There we go. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Thomas Ray, and I choose to live in downtown Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Thomas Ray, and I choose to live in downtown Portland. I speak in support of the appeal. Winston Churchill told us, "A nation that forgets its past has no future." A city's identity, a city's character comes through its history and what it values. That is expressed by what it preserves. A waterfront esplanade, a beloved park, a sign. Our downtown has had a stunning history of expositions, parades, and festivals, a thriving business core, and a celebrated entertainment district. The street, lined with glittering lights and bright marquees, was the center of Portland's nightlife. Throngs of theatergoers from every corner of the city were eager to attend the latest Hollywood productions. It was our culture. The street was not simply named Seventh Avenue, but Broadway, a reflection of the similar street in New York City. Theaters were named Fox, Paramount, Orpheum, Broadway, Music Box, Liberty, which many of you don't remember, which contributed to the identity, the appeal, and the character which was our city. They manifested a vitality and optimism in Portlanders. Today, we're at the nadir of Portland's fortunes. It is important to declare and reaffirm our city's values by what we preserve. These can be hard, difficult decisions. They are seldom convenient choices. The Broadway sign at 1,000 Southwest Broadway is the penultimate vestige of an earlier glorious theater district, a bookend to the Portland marquee across the street, together separate the original thriving theater district we called Broadway, and today, the current performing arts center of our city. I applaud the developer for reinvesting in downtown. We all know it is greatly needed. Yet, the developer finds it convenient to delete this sign from Portland's landscape, history, and character. Decisions of convenience do not build character or identity or value. If you want convenience, go to a mall, any mall. We have lost so much already. Will we next rename Broadway Seventh Avenue? Because Broadway has no significance? If you want the richness of a city, make the difficult but right decision. uphold this appeal in preservation of Portland's identity, character, and future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Xavier Toussaint.
Welcome.
Xavier, are you able to unmute?
If you can hear, try star six if you're on your phone. That might help. Kealan, why don't you try the next person to work with Mr. Toussaint, see if we can get him on?
Okay, sure thing. Um, I want to check in. Sometimes there's some confusion about.
Oh, there he is. Here he is.
Okay, great.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Nice to meet you all. Hello.
Thank you.
Um, I honestly didn't really have much to, to, to say in any way. I was more spectating, so please, carry on to the next person.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate your being here. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, I'd like to just do a quick check in with the others on the line to make sure they've signed up for the, the correct time. So we have.
And, and Kealan, Mr. Zarnicki is also raising his hand. I think he's trying to get your attention.
Okay, yeah. John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Are you testifying in support of the appeal today?
I am testifying in support of the appeal. What I'd like to do before I testify, if I may, since, since you cannot see any images, I'd like to ask Mr. Weir to, to put his three images up, please, and one would be especially helpful for my testimony. I think it's number three, Mr. Weir. Uh, no, it's actually number two. Yes, thanks very much. That's very helpful. And is it time for me to start now?
Yeah, since we've got you up, why don't you go ahead and start?
Oh, thanks very much.
Yeah.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Zarnicki of 1020 Southwest Taylor, number 234. I'm a past Chair of the Landmarks Commission and Principal of New Traditional Architecture, specializing in urban design, new architecture, and restoration. Today, I speak in strong support of the DNA and their appeal of the decision regarding the Broadway sign currently located at the corner of Southwest Broadway and Main. The existing sign should be saved and renovated to maintain and reinforce a character-defining sense of place in the culture district. It relates directly to approval criteria number A5. It's clear that the Broadway sign is an essential physical element in the urban composition. It reinforces a genuine sense of place at the traditionally celebratory intersection, intersection. Please see, uh, Mr. Weir's, uh, image there. You can see that the, that the two theater signs make the end of the street, but they also start to enclose the intersection, which is further enclosed by the two light beacons that accompany the gates into the space between the wings, Winning Step and the Schnitzer. So, so my point is that there's this urban space being made that's actually of the intersection. That's, that's more than just about the sign, just about the two signs, but it's actually useful space. A western edge of the Broadway Main intersection was most recently reborn by the Portland sign and space-defining light standards keeping the Broadway sign across the street will add a three-dimensional quality, marking the space from all four directions. Saving and renovating the Broadway sign in this location will integrate elements that reflect and build on this area's character by reinforcing the celebratory, the space, space for all people. This place will be significantly diminished by this removal, yet gratefully, greatly enhanced by the retention and renovation of Broadway signs. I think that's about it. Again, it's, uh, it's really about, from my standpoint, I agree with everything that's been said by the appellant. The only thing I would add is that this is actually a space. It's not a series of objects. It's actually more than a gateway even. It's a space that, that can be occupied. And that space because of the, because of, of the, of the signs and the beacons can be seen for all four directions once the sign is renovated and if it stays in place. Actually, a place for all Portlanders together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, I'd like to check in with R. Louis Elliott and Tyler McIntyre to see if they're ready to testify in support of the appeal.
This is Lou Elliott. I'm actually in favor. I am wishing to testify in opposition to the appeal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Tyler McIntyre? Oh, okay. I just got a note from him that he will not be testifying. That concludes the testimony in support of the appeal, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. We will now hear from the principal opponent of the appeal.
So I'm going to share my screen if that's okay?
Sure.
So I'm Jason Tand with LRS Architects. From the inception of this project, we've established a design priority of moving away from the currently dark, sunken, unused series of spaces at street level. This is key to the discussion as our intent is to revitalize this neighborhood. And when I say that, I mean it quite literally as activation of the area around the building and creating an active pedestrian experience is key to everyone's success. Our design is a direct response to both context and public realms, two of the focal, key focal points of the Central City Fundamental Design Guidelines. So it's important we look at how the Broadway sign affects that design. Here you can see the base of the Broadway sign is what supports it. Near the top, connections keep the sign in place. They don't structurally support the sign. So when we talk about hanging the sign off the building, we need to acknowledge that was not the original design of the sign. The sign was not intended to hang from a building. It's the base that is the support, and that base is rooted right at the corner we're speaking of, taking the place of where we hope to inject new life into the street's gate. Existing spaces at the ground level have been vacant for about a decade now since the old basement theater closed. These restorations are a direct response to Design Guidelines, A6, which intends to, where practical, reuse, rehabilitate, and restore buildings or building elements. Recreating lost connections between active interior and exterior use is the rehabilitation and restoration of those spaces. It's because of the vacant theater, and consequently in part because of the sign's placement, that we have a lack of activity here. Our Broadway sign is being compared to the original Broadway Theater sign. Though you can see in these images, the sign from the past is a very different design than ours. The former sign style was much more related to the Portland sign on the Arlene Schnitzer Concert Hall across Broadway, seen in the middle of this slide. Let's not pretend our sign complements that style. The only similarity to the original Broadway Theater sign are the letters, and even those, you can see are of a different style, in the font, in the size, and even with the word theater at the bottom, at the bottom not being present. But it's the base and the marquee on the current sign which are the greatest departures from the past. Those are major differing elements from the Portland sign and the older historic signs of the past. None of those other signs touch the ground. They don't take up valuable pedestrian space. So our team disagrees in saying that removing the Broadway sign demonstrates a lack of context or of respect for the architectural integrity of the building. We disagree that removing the sign fails to complement the context. Describing street context in that former slide, it's just the opposite. In the written appeal, it's also stated that the hearing decision made in November to approve removing the sign was limited to the absence of a historic designation. We disagree. Removal is based on further activation of the sidewalk experience and to act for the betterment of the public realm. If we're talking about context, the signs of the past are in fact quite different. Discussing wall mounting the sign on the building is a bit of another rabbit hole. I'll get into that later. But yes, our sign is understood by designation as well. It is not historically designated. By staff allowing this removal, by approving the removal through our unanimously approved hearing, and by the physical aspects of the sign I just described, we all agree that this sign is unrelated to the more historic signage of the past. The current sign is aesthetically dated more as a hearkening or a callback to the nineties, not the twenties. And it should also be noted that the original 1,000 Broadway building was permitted without the sign. They were not designed together. The sign's permitting was an isolated element, separate, after the building's design was permitted. In this building's rigid symmetry, the sign is the one element that's actually out of touch with the rest of the building's aesthetic. I would argue all of these are the reasons why back in November, the design commissioners didn't even fathom the idea of removing the base and hanging the sign off the building. The findings presented from the appellant also state that the adjustment presented in 1991 for theater use allowed for a sign that was more consistent with the architecture and development of the site. At that time, it was true. It was a theater. See, there's a reason why the Portland sign has been restored and maintained at its current location. It is a concert hall. With the exception of retail at our ground floor, all 23 floors of 1,000 Broadway are of professional office use. Also note, this project does not demolish the sign. We're not saying it has no place in the universe. It just doesn't make sense on this building. As we've expressed to the Downtown Neighborhood Association outside of this hearing, our intent has been to retain it in storage as we have the hope of reusing it elsewhere, if possible, in similar capacity. Doing so affords us the ability to better use the sidewalk realm to address our neglected, neglected street-level context. This building desperately needs to be rebranded to be more directly related to its current and future intended use, which is in fact professional office use. It is not a theater. So in summary, the basis of the Design Guidelines is to better the public realm and respond to context. You can then understand the reasoning from our hearing in November of why there was no disagreement from either staff or the design commissioners to remove the current Broadway sign from this building. And here we're looking up and down Southwest Broadway. You can see a series of wall-mounted signage, as well as some roof-mounted signs. None of what's depicted here show any sort of base mounting on the sidewalk or on building sites. And also note, what remains of any of the signage seen here is just the Paramount sign at the left, which has logically been repurposed as the Portland sign at the concert hall. Aside from that, looking down Broadway in its current state, there really only exists a series of retail and restaurant signage, those signs being specifically related to those individual uses. The Portland sign appears to be the only actual direct correlation with the history we're speaking of and with logical purpose on a concert hall. So why force a theater sign to remain on a professional office building? Doing so doesn't fit the current model and style nor in purpose. Our original response to the Design Guidelines stated that the prominent Southwest Broadway view of the Arlene Schnitzer Concert Hall's marquee and Portland sign stands as an iconic compliment to 1,000 Broadway's iconic presence as one of Portland's most recognizable towers. It is recognition of the building itself, which creates a canvas, if you will, for the concert hall's imagery and its iconic historic sign. It does reflect the history of the theater district. The sign in our building, acting as a freestanding element, sitting on the ground, actually stands in the way of unifying our building with the Portland sign and the concert hall's marquee. The three corners that the appellant says are unified by the three signs isn't applicable as our building has no theater or entertainment use. The other two make clear sense. So a better unification lies in activating the activities of these spaces across Broadway, not the signs. Think of these things collectively, working together. We better unify them, as per A4 and the guidelines, unifying elements. A better response to the guidelines lies in the warm glow of activity within new tenant spaces complementing the Portland sign and marquee. Here we allow for welcomed activity that flows into the pedestrian experience, affording a safer and more exciting series of spaces, better both at the interior and the exterior than if the Broadway sign were to remain, blocking this prominent corner. Again, 1,000 Broadway is not a theater, nor is there intended to be a theater in the future at this location. The ticketing booth and arcade at this corner are dead spaces that are planned to be repurposed for the better and are unanimously approved design. The sign was an identifier of those theater functions. It was logical when it functioned as such. So here you can imagine retail, a restaurant, or other active use that spills out onto the street with the amazing unique bonus this building presents, that cut corner that opens it even further. If we talk about keeping the existing sign, you can imagine the effect it would have on these accepted design improvements. Openness, visual connectivity to the street, these would be lost. And you can see that here. Consider also now the missing canopy at the corner. What we proposed couldn't remain in this scenario. Corner canopies are interrupted and views are blocked. And that cutoff from the street corner is experienced in all directions, here from the concert hall, then again from across Main Street at the Gus Solomon Courthouse. The sign removes those visual connections that have been so vital to these improvements. So let's compare. Keeping the sign removes the corner canopy, and the base is directly in front of the corner tenant, and in doing so, creates an unsafe alcove in the space between the sign's base and new glazing, compared with the approved improvements at the right, where you retain that openness, but also have protection above you as you round the corner. And that may seem trivial, but the canopy is such an important element to note as part of activating this important node of downtown. What Commissioners agreed upon in our hearing was our creation of a stopping point where people can come together on the street. It's clear to see how the sign takes away from that experience. We also need to note that when we talk about the potential to reuse the sign at this location in a different way, say, hanging it off the building, preserving and maintaining the sign on-site was never in this project's scope of work. Retaining it in storage has been. And so we never explored the current condition of the sign or what it would take to maintain it for years to come. If we talk about keeping the sign, we have to discuss this because the existing sign is not in an ideal state. Structural members and attachments are rusted on the base and the sign itself. There's denting in some portions. In the upper right photo, there's also a strange thing happening here where the marquee sign is actually resting on top of the Main Street sign. These issues were not explored, as it was understood. If it were to be reused, perhaps at a different location other than the 1,000 Broadway building, additional investigations and renovations would be required. That was clear. The appellant expresses a desire to retain the sign for the urban downtown policy, acting in favor of reinforcing Broadway as a Portland theater and Bright Lights district. We don't disagree. If it's desired, we're using it in a more appropriate location than what is truly now just a professional office building. Does make sense. And finally note, in the bottom left two photos, how the existing sign is held in place, not structurally supported, but held in place by the existing building. Two steel members penetrate the Two steel members penetrate the existing building wall. Those are a very challenging piece of this discussion. It may seem unimportant, but that granite cladding makes up all of this building's skin. It's granite from an Italian quarry that no longer exists. We cannot replace the existing stone. We explored this during design, finding that adding new panels just simply doesn't work. So we worked tirelessly throughout design to minimize impacting the granite. We need to emphasize this notion as strongly as possible. The existing stone cannot be replaced. I bring this up because we talk about hanging the sign. In our original response to the design guidelines, we addressed A2, emphasize Portland themes. First, by indicating our team's drive to protect and preserve the existing building's rose-colored granite stone paneling. Being likened to a rose, Portland's own city flower, the stone promotes and embraces the rose as a significant Portland theme. For the part it plays in this theme, and due to it being irreplaceable, protection of the cladding is of paramount importance. Removing the sign, we are not disregarding an important Portland theme. We're protecting an extremely important theme. If we were required to cut into it further to support the sign in a new way, we would be doing just the opposite and risk negatively impacting this cherished skin and so prominently recognizable symbol of our skyline. As a final note and reminder, everything we've explored and designed in the improvements for this project are intended to enrich and help revitalize this neighborhood based on providing a better design in response to the city's design guidelines. But if we move the discussion to how the sign could work without a base, then it's just a steel structure holding the lettering that remains. This is what would need to be supported off the building wall, but more specifically, tied into the existing building's structure. Now, again, we haven't explored this in detail, so it's not possible in this meeting to speak to the feasibility of doing so. But at a high level, we can say we would anticipate structural elements such as what you're seeing here. These would need to occur in at least two locations, as we would need to resist the moment and lateral forces applied. But we would need to address also current seismic codes, which would most certainly affect any reinforcing applied. But in the spectrum of risk assessment, it's really removal of those granite panels and having to cut them on the ground, which is to us a worst-case scenario. When someone like myself in the field of architecture assesses design considerations, it's imperative that we consider this type of risk. If I haven't made it clear, let me just say, we don't want to cut the stone. But consider then, it would be reapplied around whatever a new structure is, patching the holes. It goes without saying, all this work comes with an added price tag that needs to be acknowledged. At a very high level, our estimates for this added scope of work are in the range of something like $300,000 for construction costs. It's also about an eight-week feasibility process. You can imagine we're trying to do everything we can not to impact the schedule of our work. So we're hoping by retaining the sign in storage for potential reuse at another location, all parties can be satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardest.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that very in-depth presentation about the sign. I am curious about the seven mature trees that may be removed with this project. I'm surprised that staff and the planning commission did not take any action on removing seven mature trees. You may know that we have protections for trees in the city of Portland. So I'd like to ask you about these trees. What are your plans for these seven mature trees that are around this property?
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. We have resolved this offline, which is fantastic, I think. It was a great collaboration between ourselves and the Downtown Neighborhood Association. We are preserving all of the trees, I believe, but one. One which is listed in poor condition and needs to be replaced. So in the end, we're actually protecting all the trees while we're doing the construction. They won't be removed.
I am very happy to hear that. It's funny that you negotiated with downtown, but of course, we're the decision-makers, so I'm glad that you came to a good conclusion before you got to us. And so I want to repeat on the record, just to make sure that we're really clear. There's one tree that is diseased that will be removed, but the other six will be protected throughout the construction process. And we do not anticipate removing any additional trees. Am I accurate in my assessment of what you just said?
You are.
Thank you very much.
Casey, you had a question?
Another question. This is Casey Clapp with Urban Forestry. I just wanted to be clear that it's actually two trees that are in poor condition that are being removed.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Casey.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Casey, for the clarification. I had one question for you. And I'm trying to decide whether it's significant or not, but you had said in your testimony that the sign and the building were designed separately and permitted separately. Did I hear that correctly?
You did, yeah.
Okay, and that contradicts the slide that the appellate put up, which suggested, in fact states, that they were designed together and that the sign is an integral element to the design of the building. Do you dispute that?
What I had seen was listed was that it was an adjustment, which clearly indicates that it came after and was approved after the building design was approved. That's how I understand it.
Okay, and I'm going to ask the same slightly off question. Do you know where the original sign is?
You know, I don't. That's a great question.
I'm curious.
I'd love to hear that, too.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you for your presentation. You'll obviously, you might get called back. Opponents of the appeal, you have three minutes each. Kealan, do we have anybody signed up? As I believe we had at least one individual signed up, was my right collection?
That's correct. We have our Louis Elliott.
Very good.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Lou Elliott. I represent the Broadway Building, 1000 Broadway Building. My address is 901 Northeast Gleason, Portland, 97232. From the early schematic design through design review hearing in November and now attempting to move into permitting with the city, this project has been happening at unprecedented time, where we've seen and are continuing to see a substantial drop in new and renovated work, especially downtown. And in the last year, our city's high-ranking as a desirable hub for commercial real estate development and investment has moved from being amongst the most sought throughout the country to now no longer even being considered. The fact that to date, the owners of 1000 Broadway have continued to move forward through all of the challenges shouldn't be overlooked, and so many other similar endeavors have been halted or completely abandoned. I might point out that since the unrest began downtown, the building has incurred in excess of $50,000 in expenses related directly to protection and repair of the damage that's been done. We encourage you to consider this when we're discussing design revisions. Despite the purist of intentions, we'll incur substantial additional cost and create greater challenges for our team, not just in the design, but also in the approval process through the city, and of course, in the field of construction. We ask that you keep in mind, we're not opposed to seeing the Broadway sign have a new home, a more appropriate place, be that in association with an existing building on Broadway or a new future development or a public space that embraces and is in fact more appropriate for its use than a professional office building devoid of a theater. We've spent the last 10 years attempting to replace the theater unsuccessfully, and have concluded that it's not possible to bring one in the future. Our intent to date has always been to remove the sign and protect it in storage until that appropriate new home presents itself. And in fact, we had already begun to explore opportunities, including with Portland Five, the operator of the Hatfield Hall across the street, before this appeal was filed. The narrative needs to change. The challenges happening right now in Portland should be opportunities for building up the city, opportunities for the betterment of our city. Back in November, the developed design improvements of 1000 Broadway, the collaboration of our design team and working with the city staff, and the lack of any significant opposition other than this appeal from the Downtown Neighborhood Association, and the unanimous decision on the parts of the design commission to have these improvements move forward should stand as a testament to the project as designed. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Does that conclude the opponents? Kealan?
It does.
Okay, and if the appellate so chooses, they have the opportunity for rebuttal? Yes, no, maybe?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Jason.
Legal counsel, is that appropriate?
Well, rebuttal means that they're making arguments. I suppose in their argument, they can pose questions, and if the architect decides, if counsel so chooses to hear from the architect on those, that would be fine.
Well, I will try to pose them as statements, and Jason can respond accordingly.
Very good. Thank you.
I think the commercial success of the project is not dependent upon removal of the sign. We understand that active integration between pedestrian movement and the interior corner retail space is desired. We think removal of the pedestal and the marquee sign accommodates that need. But I think it needs to be recognized that the interior function of the building does not dictate the exterior form of the building. The building has a responsibility, the exterior of the building has a responsibility to enhance the nature and character of the urban space and the quality of the sidewalk. And whether it's a theater or a restaurant or a commercial space, that does not dictate the exterior form and function of the exterior of the building. So by removal of the pedestal and the marquee sign, we can continue to support the activity, the commercial activity of the corner retail space. Those two were not dependent. And to say that the sign compromises the design of the canopy, I think is grossly overestimating the importance of the canopy. The sign is an important heritage, an architectural icon, and contributes to the character, the quality, and the importance of this intersection. The canopy is present to provide weather protection. The canopy should not dictate the design and the quality of the intersection. The two are just not on the same level of importance. Regarding hanging the sign on the building, we are not proposing to hang the sign on the face of the stone facade and cladding. I don't think that that will be necessary. Jason is correct in that there has to be concern for both the vertical and the lateral support of the building or of the sign. The sign is already connected to the building in a manner that provides lateral support. The pedestal is taking a vertical support. So I think new vertical support can be provided at the top of the sign, the frame, the sign is actually contained inside a kind of a space frame presently. That space frame can be extended horizontally over the deck at the top of the sign in the recessed corner of the tower. And I think that would provide the vertical support and necessary stability for the sign. We are not trying to engage and hang the building on the face of the stone cladding. We understand that that has its own set of problems, and we agree with Jason that that should be avoided. Regarding the opportunity to relocate the sign, I think the costs of trying to remove the sign, patch the cladding, maintain and store the sign, find a new location, go through the design process for installing it at an alternative location, provide the structural support, architectural accommodation of the sign in another location. All of those costs appear to me to be more excessive than trying to provide support for the sign in place. I think it will be far easier. It will continue to respect the contribution this sign makes to the city, and it will maintain all the qualities that the sign contributes to the theater district and the qualities that we have previously identified. The commercial success of the project is not dependent upon removal of the sign. And the sign and the face of the building contribute to the quality of the urban space in a way that the flat-notched corner of the building can do. It's just important to recognize the contribution of the sign and maintain it in its present location. An alternative location will also compromise the importance of the location of this sign, which is a reference to the original Broadway sign and a reference to the historic theater district. So I think its contribution to this area and location cannot be reproduced at an alternative location.
Very good. And Jason, I don't know if you had anything to add on those points.
Yeah, I can, I think. I think my presentation stands as a fair response to everything the Paul just stated. But I guess I would add that I do, you know, being in the field of architecture, I have to be a dreamer in some sense, too. And I have this dream that this portion of downtown gets some life back into it, and we get to see an economy, and we get to see activity that spills into the evening hours. I want to come out of the Schnitz and go get a drink in the new restaurant that's across the street in our space. I want those activities to be connected. I feel they are connected. And I feel that the interior use of that space very well could help dictate what happens on the exterior of that space. It's about the people. It's not about the elements that make up the space. It's about the space that the people occupy and the people themselves. I feel that's what's important. As far as hanging the sign goes, if I could, I guess I could share my screen and show you back from my presentation this slide, which you can see over here has the original Broadway Theater sign. Now, there are many ways to make an attachment happen, but it's this sort of element that is the starting point of that discussion of hanging it off the roof. And I don't know that that's appropriate for this location. That's personally how I feel. I know the ownership group feels similarly to myself in that respect. And so if we remove that element, you know, that would be a very visual element, then we're left with hanging the sign. And you know how I feel about hanging the sign, so I don't know that I need to get into that in any more detail. As far as relocating goes, as Lou testified, we already have had conversations with other entities. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but there are some really good opportunities that might be related to the theater and entertainment districts, where this could have a new home, where it doesn't have to sit on the ground, and it can be integrated into another building's structure. And what's best is that cost, which would be another project, would be unrelated to having this project move forward and the costs associated with this project. We could deal with that separately, we feel. Everybody kind of agrees that that's a discussion that can happen offline. So I think there's a great opportunity here for allowing this project to go forward without being hampered by trying to fit this, you know, it feels like putting a square peg in a round hole. And essentially, it's an old use that's no longer there. I think that's the basis of the discussion.
All right. Thank you. Good presentations. Thank you, everybody, for your testimony today. That gives us a lot to think about. Colleagues, are there any questions for staff or for either of the parties involved? I'm not seeing any. Then, does anybody object on the counsel if I close the evidentiary hearing? I'm not hearing any objections, so the evidentiary record in this hearing is now closed. And to be clear, that means the counsel will accept no more oral or written testimony for this particular land use appeal. So that gets us then to the questions of deliberation or discussion or emotion. Just as a reminder, colleagues, we have three options. The first is to deny we have three options. The first is to deny the appeal and uphold the Design Commission's decision of approval with conditions. The second is to deny the appeal but modify the Design Commission's decision of approval with conditions and instruct the applicant to revise the design and return to counsel at a future date. Third is to grant the appeal thereby overturning the Design Commission's decision to approve with conditions. In this case, the project would be denied. Legal counsel, to die parrot back your comments accurately?
Yes.
Very good. Colleagues, Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, Mayor. In reviewing the records on this issue, I am referring to a Portland Bureau of Planning document that is dated that is dated May 2, 1991. And the document clearly shows that the 1000 building was approved prior to any approval of a sign, even though a sign was authorized at the time that the 1000 Broadway project was approved. But it was clear that at that time, there was not a recommendation on a sign, what it would look like, where it would be posted. On July 19, 1991, the Design the Design Commission approved the design of the sign itself. And in fact, they noted that 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 there was a concern that the sign was in fact larger than it was allowed to be at that time. And so the the appellate who has submitted this request to the planning commission, I find their statement to be accurate and consistent with the records that I've reviewed. Therefore, I would recommend that we reject the appeal and approve the planning commissions, the Design Commission's recommendation on how to move forward.
You have a motion?
Yes, I move that we reject the appeal and support the Design Commission's recommendations about how this project moves forward.
Very good. Commissioner Hardisty is moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Ryan, seconds. Any further discussion? Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Thanks. I just want to say that the decisions that the Design Commission is asked to make are often very, very difficult. And this is a great example of one of those really hard decisions. And I like one of us or like all of us here enjoy the wonderful and unique and well-known areas that really contribute to the feel of what Portland is all about. And at the same time, I'm learning that these kinds of proceedings, the real question before us is really about the application of the policy guidelines in situations like these. So this is highlighted areas concerned that we might need to look at in the future so that we can address some clarity issues. And that's what I would be interested in and have energy to do. Overall, my best determination is that the original design review should be upheld. And I do want to appreciate the downtown neighborhood associations, their their deep care and interest and willingness to engage in other aspects of this project with the developer, which has resulted in really positive outcomes that we've seen and heard about. And as Arts Commissioner for the city, key to my decision on this was hearing the respondent talk about not only the impact on the current structure if it hung, but also the current plans to preserve and relocate the sign somewhere where there's an interest for it and hopefully connected to the arts district in some capacity. So I would for one would be be very interested in tracking this issue and I have I will be watching with great interest in that. So I vote I.
Ryan.
Yeah, good afternoon and thank you so much, Mr. Wheeler in the Downtown Neighborhood Association. I I was I was really on the fence when I came into this hearing and I found it very compelling. Who knew that this would be so compelling? It was. And I will just say, the mayor took a little bit out of my, the wind in my sails when it was on the record that this wasn't the original Broadway sign. And of course, I wonder where that is, aren't we all? So there's that. I also really didn't care about the movie theaters not being there. I just want to say that. And I still think a sign could be there. Maybe it's because I used to go to movies at Irvington Theater. Now, you know, that sign's still there and it's been a drugstore and a sushi place or whatever. So, you know, we have a precedence for doing that. My point that I'm making is that I didn't find that there was enough evidence or compelling case to keep the sign. We put the sign back up, knowing that we all wanted to get rid of the marquee and the bottom part. But I I do concur with my colleague Commissioner Rubio about the importance of our arts and cultural district. And it would be wonderful to have some more illumination. And this just isn't the right place at the right time. And I will admit that Mr. Tan, you did your work and so did the Planning Commission. Why would I? And so they dove into this with great detail. And I was fortunate to hear all of that today and more. It did come alive. It was a great hearing. I I will vote I. Thanks.
Hardisty.
I want to stop by thanking the Downtown Business Association. Clearly, you have passion behind historic preservation and I share that view in many ways. I'm also really trying to think about what Portland looks like coming out of this pandemic and how Portland will be richer because of the rich racial and ethnic diversity that we have that honestly is not represented in the historic nature of Portland today. And so while I am a big fan of like old wood and preservation of a whole bunch of stuff, I I think that the design that's been put forth and approved by the Design Commission looks welcoming. It looks open. I was thinking about how many tables the restaurants would be able to put on the sidewalk out there in the summertime and how cool that would be. I miss that theater, I will say, because I spent a lot of time in that theater watching movies that I couldn't see anywhere else in the city of Portland. So I'm a bit disappointed that there won't be a theater attached to this property. But I certainly understand that theaters are dying all over the country, so no surprise that they're dying here as well. And so I want the the Downtown Business Association to know I did not make my motion lightly. I really did weigh based on the facts that we were presented with. And I would have fought to the death if we had have been taking out those trees because we won't live long enough to see new trees grow to adulthood. And so I am, I want to thank you for working with the developer to make sure that we were preserving as many trees as possible. And therefore, I vote I on this motion.
Maps.
I want to thank all the parties who testified today. This was truly compelling conversation, which caused me to sort of see that corridor differently than I did even yesterday. And like the Downtown Neighborhood Association, I do regret the loss of historic character that removing the sign would bring. At the same time, like the Downtown Neighborhood Association, I'm also really excited about this project, which will activate a space which has been dormant for about 13 years. At a time like this, I think that we need this more than ever. I also want to express my appreciation for the owners of the building and the architects for being willing to store the sign. One of the things that I'll pledge to do as a member of council is to be a partner to you as we find a new space and place for for that important artifact. I think it can be revitalized and be part of Portland's future in an exciting way. So with that, I I vote I. And I thank everybody for their testimony today. This was great.
Wheeler.
I believe the the Design Commission got it right. I believe they upheld the design guidelines as were presented today. And so I will vote I on this tentative vote. I want to be clear, this is a tentative vote. The way we do these is we take one vote today and then there will be a time certain where we will take our final vote. But I I want to put in a good word for everybody who's part of this process. First of all, I appreciate the fact that somebody is going to attempt to fix an architectural blunder of the past, which was the way that this building absolutely destroyed activation at the street level. And I do not believe it was intentional, but the reality is that's what happened. And I I know people have tried various strategies over many, many years to activate that space. It is right across the street from a highly activated series of blocks. And so I I'm glad that this is getting the attention and the focus that it deserves. With regard to the sign, I actually agree with the arguments that were put forward by the appellants regarding a consistency of theme and creating something of a theater district and arts and culture district for the downtown area in the vicinity of the the Schnitz and others. And while that is compelling to me, the argument rings a little bit hollow because that sign is actually, in my humble opinion, and this has nothing to do with my decision, I'm just now expressing to you my opinion, it is a parody of what used to be there. I think it's one of the ugliest signs in Portland. That that doesn't matter for the purposes of this hearing, but it's not like the original sign. The original sign was really remarkable and it was beautiful and historic neon signs are now being protected all across the country. If anybody has a chance to visit Boston, they've done a really phenomenal outside art installation of historic neon signs from around the Boston area. And it's it's a very, very popular park. And so I I know there's a love for not only the idea that this is our historic arts and entertainment district, but also for the art and creativity that went into the design of those original neon signs. This isn't one of those. I'm glad to hear you're going to store it. I personally don't care whether this sign ever comes out of storage again. But I get the larger point about trying to create excitement and some pizzazz consistent with the fact that this is still the center of gravity, not the only arts district in our community, but the center of gravity of our our major theater organizations. And I I hope that continues. So I wish everybody the best of luck with this renovation. Portland needs a shot in the arm. We need that the idea that you could potentially locate a restaurant there right across from some of the other theaters. Everybody who's ever tried to get into a restaurant in that area before a show knows it can be very very difficult. So I think there's an opportunity there. I'm excited about some of the reworking of the original street level. But with regard to the matter before us today, I think just looking at the clear design standards by which the Design Commission made their decision, they were consistent. I believe they were accurate. I believe they followed the guidelines clearly and therefore, I'm willing to support Commissioner Hardisty's original proposal. So I vote I. So the motion to deny the appeal passes 5-0. The appeal is tentatively denied. The council clerk and the city attorney, I assume you've worked out a date and a time certain for this matter to return to the city council for a final vote?
We have, Mayor. Because just, and this is education because we have some new commissioners, when we don't have land use attorneys or representatives of the prevailing party, BDS and the city attorney work on the findings, which allows us to maybe do it a little quicker. So we plan to come back on March 3 at 10:25 a.m.
Okay, and that works with both parties?
There won't be any testimony. That will just be our final vote. Is that accurate?
That is, that is correct, Commissioner.
I just want to make sure if they're they want to be available, they're available. I'm not hearing an objection, so that sounds good. We will take that. Can you repeat the date and time? It's March?
March 3 at 10:25 a.m. I have that correct, Kealan. Yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your presentations today. Thank you all for your testimony. What we all agree on is we all love our city and we all care deeply about its future, even though we may disagree around the edges. But thank you to all of you for all the the time and the energy that you've put into this and frankly, the passion you show for Portland. We need that passion now, perhaps more than we've ever needed it before. And I thank each and every one of you for that. That completes our business for today. We are adjourned.